Will everyone please join in the first place?
President's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll call it to you before this president are, Mayor Lake County Clerk, Attorney General, Justice Mitch, Charles Banks Commission, E. Claus Commission. First is to approve the minutes of the regular session Lincoln County Commission meeting that was scheduled on June 4th, 2015, 16. Alright, any further discussion, all those in favor please say aye. That being announced, the motion carries. Next, we have public comment, we have KCB regarding the lifestyle exercise.
Thank you guys, I'm actually gonna let a couple of my colleagues do most of the talking here for me. These are official end of the disc golf brochures that Mr. Johnny Seis was kind enough to bring in for us.
As a teacher, I'm used to usually wandering around and talking, is it appropriate to sit or stand?
That's honest. This is Mr. Riazi, he's a lab teacher at the Hines.
Adam Riazi, I know a few of you by face, a few of you personally, and a few of you by name, but I know that you all have connections to the school system and obviously to the community. Lincoln County High School and Lincoln County Board of Education have recently approved a disc golf course to be placed on Lincoln County High School property. You may have seen that in the Lincoln Journal or heard something about that around town. And myself, Mr. Beaver, and Johnny Seis are here to ask for the county commission to join with the community and with us to hopefully make this a possibility for Lincoln County, Lincoln County High School, and Lincoln County citizens. Our plan is to create an eighteen-hole, free-to-the-public, disc golf course, all funded through community donations and volunteer labor, both from our student population, myself, Mr. Beaver, local disc golf clubs, and the community of Lincoln County at large.
We just got word that Rick TV has pledged, what'd they say, twenty people per four days to live?
Well, excellent. I know that we have some money in hand already, and we are, have plenty of labor through our vocational departments, creating tee signs, our graphic design people are creating score sheets and all of that. We actually have a three-time world champion disc golfer here with us today to give a little pitch.
Guyan Valley graduate.
This gentleman is a Guyan Valley graduate in nineteen seventy.
Give you guys a minute.
And give a little memento here. What we are officially asking for is for the commission to help partner with us, that if we, we will have a community sponsorship for nine of the holes, which will totally three thousand six hundred dollars, and we're asking the commission to hopefully match that in order to complete an eighteen-hole course available to the public.
I have Piggly Wiggly has committed to sponsor holes for four hundred dollars, City National Bank, and insider word from the Journal and Primary Care that they're like almost a sure thing to sponsor a hole. We, Johnny and I might sponsor a hole if I come up short, but I'm almost a hundred percent sure I can get at least nine sponsors. It's easy advertising, they get a permanent tee sign on the hole that says this hole sponsored by City National Bank. But yeah, we're wanting to get nine from the community, and then we came here today to ask you guys to donate the other nine.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have to mow it to take care of it?
Absolutely not.
Or, I mean, I'll just...
I talked to Mr. Snyder about that, and he said since it's fully on the high school property, that the people that mow the high school property will maintain it. He actually wants to do this as well, he's on board because they're applying for this big grant next year, and part of the requirement of that grant is to have some sort of after-school healthy lifestyle activity for the kids, they have to offer after-school tutoring and attention and some sort of healthy activity. So Dana's all about it, he said we have the equipment, the FFA has the equipment to maintain it, we just have to get the funding and kinda get the ball rolling on that.
Have you all spoken with Parks and Recreation?
That was one of our next steps, was to actually speak with the Parks and Recreation as well, to see if they could especially help with labor when this does come about. I think that it would be very, very helpful to have more people who are trained to use, you know.
They also have funds.
They also have funds available.
So I would, when I would approach them, in fact, Ms. Harv sits on that committee on, so, and I know, you'll hear this all night if you sit here, about how much money we don't have. But now, Parks and Rec is, not that they have a whole lot of money, but they do have some monies available, and I think this supports not only the high school, but also the community, so.
Yeah, it's for everyone.
I think it would be good to involve them with that.
Absolutely.
We're kinda doing those type things through that arm of our government, as far as involving, trying to get them more involved in other things going on, so, you know, I think that would be a fine area, and people need to talk to about it.
Oh, wait, you have another next thing you want, somebody to show us out, and then you will come, or I can present it.
Okay.
For you.
We would certainly be willing to come. Our hope is just to provide something that is community-based, and not just, you know, for students or anything like that, but to involve as many people within the community as possible, because this is a healthy lifestyle activity that people can do from age, I have a four-year-old daughter who plays, and there's people who, that I can play with.
There's people signed up to play in the World Championships this year that are above eighty.
Virtually free to play, very low-impact, just hiking, basically.
Yeah, all you need is one or two discs, you can get cheap discs from anywhere from seven dollars to twenty dollars, you just need two discs, a driver and a footer, you play just like, play just like regular golf, you throw, count the number of throws it takes you to get, and you put the disc in the basket, play just like, it's like regular golf.
The great thing about us putting it on the school property is that we utilize part of the property that nobody else wants, which is like right along the tree line. If you just go out on a big open field and throw frisbees, you don't have any obstacles to dodge, so we're gonna use like parts of the property that won't bother anybody else, it'll be right on the edge of the property line.
So how much of the holes, if we know other people that wanna sponsor, and was it four hundred dollars or something?
Yes, and it's a, it's a, we try to get businesses to put their name and business on there, and it's advertisement from now on, forever, so it's really pretty cheap, four hundred dollars, pretty good advertisement.
Do you have a form or anything that we could send to the people if they wanna make a donation?
I believe Mr. Beaver had a cover letter that...
I had a letter I can send, it's, we really, we have to get an account set up through the school to start taking in this money. This is the first time I've ever asked for community money to do something school-related, so I don't know how the accounting works on that, but...
Rhonda Kermines, our financial secretary, is supposed to set us up a sub-account that will allow us to keep these funds separate and only for the Lincoln County Disc Golf Club, which...
And we have to make sure, I don't know if the balance is on mark, you know, we can't direct into business sometimes, so we have to...
Absolutely, it would go directly to a, to a school account.
No, okay.
That would support only, only that.
Then that school could cut a check to Innova for the supplies.
I would suggest getting the, you know, contact, we need your contact, contact information, we need your address, phone number, we need all of you. I would like, I would recommend that you talk to Parks and Recreation initially, and see what they can do, but I'd like to have your information with us.
You know, I think we could let Parks right now, but we feel it's a priority as far as commissions concerned, so we have a help in with our decision.
Great. That'd be absolutely wonderful.
But I think for four hundred dollars, it's good advertisement, y'all think you could sell those?
I know that we can do that as well, and the best part is that, we, I mean, we've had disc golf baskets out at our school a few times, and we've had fifty kids out there throwing discs around, we've had people very interested, and the best part is that the creation of the course involves students, that our, our building construction has volunteered to, to pour the concrete tee pads and to do some of the landscaping. Our welding people have volunteered to do any repair on baskets or to help with any of the metal that's involved, and to build the tee signs. Our graphic design is gonna do, you know, course maps and things like that, so it's a pretty, a pretty inexpensive and all-inclusive project that I think could definitely help a lot of people in Lincoln County.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you all coming.
And it's, health-wise, it's, some people, I tell everybody, it's kinda like hiking in the woods, only you get to throw, throw discs, and your movement, your upper body movement, it's, it's not great physical exercise, but it's a lot better than sitting on the couch, and it gets people out, and, you know, I've seen so many younger kids playing with their grandparents, and then when they started that, this friend of mine I graduated with, him and his dad didn't get along at all when he was growing up, and now we're best friends, they play golf all the time.
Are you gonna give lessons?
Uh, yeah. But just so we're clear, I mean, what, for us, for our next step forward, what, what would you like us to do to make sure that this can get rolling, you know?
I think the first thing you need to do is, I think you need to contact Parks and Recreation.
Can you give your contact?
That's it, and we need your contact information, we'll get over there, okay?
That'd be wonderful.
And I think that that will kinda even follow along.
Great.
Is that good?
Yeah. We appreciate your time.
Thanks, guys.
What's your guys' timeline as far as when you're starting for the old and things like that?
Our plan, the school board has given us basically blanket approval to move forward with this. Johnny has designed forty sub-courses over the, all over the US, the best time to design it.
Wondering when it's all the time.
There's no one in his own court.
The best time to design courses is fall to winter, so our hope with that would be that we would be able to present a course design back to the Lincoln County Board of Education. All that they really wanted to see was whole locations to make sure that they are actually on the property, that was really their only concern, and that they wouldn't affect the future building of the, of the mystical football stadium. And, and that, our, our plan is to put that in place in the, in the winter, to be able to move forward in the spring with the actual creation of the course.
We may actually be able to start the club with like a month into school, and then once the course starts being created, the kids in the club could help with...
Does the school board, or does it want to help you all with the semi, or?
We haven't approached them about, about monetary help now.
I just, I presented last month, asked for permission to do it, I didn't ask them for any money, but...
Might be bad, I did ask them as well.
Yeah.
But I mean, from our end, I think that we need to go through the Parks and Recreation first, but I'll, in the meantime, I would ask the Board of Education as well.
Yeah, and you know, in the past, we have, when we have monies, we've probably had a lot, but we've matched what they've done, so, you know, if the board can come up with some monies, and not saying we can do it now, okay?
Right.
I'm just, historically, we've done things like that.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you guys.
You know, that's one of the best messages.
I appreciate it, my wife would probably disagree. Thank you so much.
Alright, next we have Chad stores, for a letter from Congressman.
Thank you, I mentioned, Al, he's got me down, so he quite quickly hear me, but I'm here on behalf of Congressman Jenkins today. Branson Midkiff Public Service District had contacted our office about their intentions to apply for a six hundred thousand dollar grant through the USDA, and basically, as I understand that, it will be for fifteen hundred, a water line, a hundred and fifty thousand gallon water storage tank, new tank, and the rehabilitation of an existing hundred fifty thousand gallon water storage tank valve. And the Congressman is in support of this project, so that's why he is, we've already sent a letter in, we wanted to present you guys with the copy letter today.
I really appreciate it, I like the chat.
Appreciate it.
You can relay the message, we appreciate everything.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Alright, next on the agenda, Glenn, would you like to speak? David Agnes, town head.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for the help and support at the Fourth July. It seemed like it was a great Fourth July parade, fireworks were great, we had a little hitch getting them, but I appreciate all the help the county commission gave us, and have been this going on, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, that's it, the public comment, next we have Mike Webb, region two, drawdown request.
I have a couple of different draw requests tonight, one is for Big Hearts Phase One, and the other is for the Francis Creek, quite a small city, Black Roundup, request. The one for Big Hearts Phase One is for sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, sent us for a one invoice from Neil Robinson.
We have a motion too.
I'm making a motion, you said, how you assign it.
You got a second? Any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
It's going really well, I think, as we schedule it, we're doing an extension here now, and it should be done for the next couple of months, it should be finished, so we can close the office around about a year as far as more. Francis Creek, request number ten, for eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars and twenty-three cents, and it includes three invoices from region two, planning development, and one invoice from Neil Robinson, for any of that, and again, it's for eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three cents.
I'm looking for the drawing here, let's see, can I? Any further discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Francis Creek should be starting construction, if not, just pretend they're in materials every, certainly by next week.
Yeah, they're watching the materials, they're seeing they're not moving, and they're concerned that whoever's gonna get done or not.
I talked to these years, they...
You confirmed that it would be about the thirteen. Alright, good. You heard that, didn't you, Mary?
Yeah, I did hear that, yes.
I think you can figure out what they're for.
Your semi copy?
Yeah. In color.
Did you notice where you have your gin? Did you notice where you have your gin?
Right at the top. Right at the top. Thanks, actually. Alright, next we have, review appointment of the Lincoln PSD, Attorney Advocate, Mike Gervonta, Spiro, please, can I say that? Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to see if appoint Gary in the house, sir.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
That being announced, I should go. Next on the agenda, we have Josh Murphy, assess, request about funding for part-time positions for government day, ten thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and table this if we might, I'll make a motion over there.
Alright, some motion on forward, just a second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye. You comment to that, that motion, I've met with Mr. Murphy, and talked with both of my ministers, I'm just, I'm just with, with, a budget as it is, I'd like to really look at it a little longer before we then do the expense to that. And I do, I do realize that this will have some effect on, on his office, on government day, but I would feel a little better if we could look at all these particular type things, it's gonna cost us money, with the idea that when we do have monies available to do that, we can do that, and I just really feel concerned right now that, as far as where, where, where at with carryover and things like that, I would feel more comfortable if we could wait just a little while to determine whether we want to fund this type of thing.
So that will be for Kim Farley and the donation.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion, we probably need to do these separate, I'll go ahead and make the motion, and we table Mr. Farley's request.
Okay, just a second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
That being announced, motion carries, and next, just go to the donation, the Francis Mall there.
Honest motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
That being announced, motion carries. Next we have the proposed residential and commercial flood plan, development development fees, I don't know, I just got this to you, and I wanted to, it's in your packet, I want you to go ahead and look at it, and I'd like to bring it, I want to give you time to look at the joint counties, you have that information, and what the commercial development fee is for proposed for Lincoln County from the Plank Commission, and I'd like to address that in, in a later, in a later meeting, but I just wanted to give that to you. Next, a little business, I don't wanna take action on that, if there's any action right now. Next is county insurance policy, and we have one quote from the risk board, and we were waiting on another quote from the Lincoln...
Well, Lincoln agencies getting the project for that Ford and Brim brand, do I say?
Go ahead.
She doesn't think they're gonna be anywhere near comfortable, but she hasn't got a quote yet, but...
So she thinks it'd be a lot more, isn't it? Maybe to just stay a little bit.
No, that's what the agent told me directly, but I mean, it's time to remember, so I think we need to...
Well, I'll, I'll move to stay with the, with the county of this school.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
That being announced, motion carries. We want any unfinished business, we have new business, hoping that you all look over the new business. Go ahead.
Look down on page three, see the inter-office provision from me, that needs off there. I thought I needed an inter-office, but it was actually a state, so there's nothing on that either.
So to approve the inter-office provision submitted by Mary Nathan, Minister of System, from two?
Yeah.
We don't need to do this?
No.
Cut that out, done, new business. And if you don't have any other, anything else that you see, then I want to have a motion to approve the new business that's submitted, with regard to Mary Nathan.
Thank you.
Inter-office provision.
I'll make it, sir.
I'll second that. Any further discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
That being announced, motion carries. Well, that is, that's it for business here, you have anything?
Just one thing I mentioned was, in which we've already acted on, is to contact PSD about the Quail Bureau, I think, subdivision, as far as...
I found out something about that.
Okay. The only thing I was, the only thing I was, I got a call from a lady in that subdivision where it wasn't getting notified, said she wasn't on the division.
Oh, I was on here, was it?
Right, and that's why, and I just made a comment because it was a new business and to prove it, and I just wanted to comment that I thought the paper did a really good job, and it just so happened, in the editorial, they talked about the West Virginia Public, I mean, West Virginia American Water thing, and things of that nature, and I think just as a general comment, you know, these, these things are really important, that these people be notified when they have water line breaks, so that they can have well advisory, and know when to get them, when, when they can stop, because this is, this is a safety issue, and I do think that, and, and the letter that we're asking the commission to send is just basically to make sure that, that all people that pay for the service are, are in the system, are notified, and things of that nature.
I called over there, and they said that it wasn't required, it was just like a courtesy thing, that they do, but the system was so old that they have, it's not like the automated services the school board has, it can call out thousands of people in a couple minutes or whatever. It takes three hours from the time it starts to go through the desk, so if something happens at nine o'clock at night, but they start that, it would be midnight before the last person, and you, you kinda have to, you know, people might be up there, call them midnight, so it's just a call on there, and then, do we start it now, or wait, or?
I, I guess I look at the position, I kinda look at, you know, the difference, say, you know, if you got problems with water lines, you know, you need to make sure people are notified, that same thing we had happen with the problem we had with Free Industries, and wanting to take out the Charleston thing, you know, and how punk they got on with that, things like that.
I mean, she told me, we can start at a midnight, if you want us to, but you know, it takes three hours to get there.
Well, I, I wouldn't want everybody running around saying, well, the reason we're waking you up at midnight is because Doc Van Sitch, but I, but I do think it's important, it's important enough that maybe that's one of those things that you not, might need to know, you know, if we get up the next morning not knowing we're using water that might be contaminated, to me, I would want to notify me, and I, and I'm sure that most people would, and that, that makes, once we're informed, then we can decide on whether to use the water or not, so, but I, but I understand what they're saying, but I mean, I just think, when I look at it, it's kinda from the realm of, you know, a public safety issue, and...
And that's always been an issue over there with the call.
Right, and, and I think, you know, and I think things are continuing to get better, and, and I appreciate the job that people do over there, but I do think that people that, if you've got large groups of people not being notified and have water main breaks, or have breaks that might affect their health, it's probably gonna put you in a situation that wants to, you know, later on, so, you know, I think, just having said that, I think if they look at it from the point of view that it's probably one of the more important things that they do, is notify people when their water's maybe contaminated, and maybe over there, but, but I, I don't know what the law is as far as what they have to, have not to do, but if they had a system in place, they should work toward having a system in place to let them notify people in place, sir.
Well, that's what our, that's what we were asking, we were asking them to update their call-out list, and by updating their call-out list, and that will, you know, hopefully that'll take care of all the...
I think they need a new system, so they were getting that, but...
I understand, but get that, get that call list updated. Do you have anything?
No, I would just like to make a little reference to the farmers market, I don't know, they take it dress line every day, but it's a whole understanding, it's a shelter of ours, so I think we have an EDA meeting Tuesday night, and then we should start, we know more about when it's actually gonna be going on.
How, how are the farmers supposed to know what to do, I mean, I mean, as far as, you know, you know, is there a system set up yet that they can, you all know who's over there, you know what I mean?
I don't think so, that's just how they cut it out, yeah.
That was whenever I was on the EDA, that was the...
We haven't really talked about that.
The big discussion with Larry was that whenever things got set up, that they were gonna be initiated, and go ahead and, you know, talk to the people, the Farm Bureau, and go ahead and, and start with the marketing.
And see, yeah, I think the marketing's point, I think it's also important to have Larry look into liabilities, you know, so we're not, you know, we're not gonna be liable for things, if something would happen, and things of that nature, because we can't really control what goes on, you know, and...
I think he has.
And that's good, I think that's good, we look at it from the whole thing, as far as security, as far as, you know, how do people get to use the city, and the marketing, because that's gonna be the most important thing, I think, is once we get to people and they're selling the goods, is to make sure that they have, we have the marketing set up where they can get it from that, at that location, and then, you know, the success of future farmer markets depends upon the success of this one, so I think it really, even though we look at different things in different areas, I think we need to look at this as kind of a learning experience, and we, you know, we're not gonna do everything exactly right this time, but as we go through the process, and go the one this way, and the one up the river, we'll have a better idea of what works and what doesn't work, so, that's your opinion.
Anything else? Last thing I would say is, I'd like to thank Mark Gervonta for his work that he's done with the PSD, when he took over, and we appointed him to Lincoln PSD, it was in a little hurt, a lot of problems there, I think that he explained that they started with, about two, about twenty thousand dollars in the bank, whatever, he, he got there, and they're working out of that hole, and I just wanna thank him, and thank the, the other people on the board for, you know, really stepping forward, because that was a huge mess, and really caused a lot of controversy. But the next thing I'd like to say is, appreciate the letter that the assessor sent out, I think it was regarding, I think it was a request from the school board, actually showing the different values for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, for class two real, real estate and personal property, class three, class four, and if anyone's familiar with how they're assessed, and how we receive our money, they'll actually see that in class two and class four from two thousand four, two thousand five, there was a, you know, there was an increase that, and, and that shows that, you know, we have, assessor's office is, is doing their job, and going out and getting, and doing what they're supposed to do. The problem that we have, and this is where we find our revenue that's lacking, is because of class three, which is basically assigned by the state, we don't have any type of discretionary action on that, and we saw a decrease there with, what, nineteen point three million dollar decrease, which really hit us hard, you know, with our revenue. with our revenue. But I just want to, I appreciate what you did there, appreciate you, you know, getting the, the word out, and, and kind of explaining the situation, explaining...
Yeah, you know, just to follow that up, you know, I, I know more about it than I did, thanks to Josh, but you know, he's been doing good, apart from giving me information and, and making sure I understand what he's doing, and, you know, of all of us that took office at that time, he's had the roughest job to do, the toughest job to do, and that was mandated by the state, and he's done that job, and so I don't want, you know, anyone, when I, when I make motions not to approve things that's requested by this commission, it's not a reflection on the job that the assessor's done or that the sheriff's done. It's based upon just my, as I said before, my, my uncertainty about the budget, not having a lot of experience with it, but I do want to commend the job that it's been, like I said, probably the toughest job he ever saved to do, and, and he's done it quite well, but I appreciate that.
Was there anything? If we don't have anything else, I would move to close the county commission.
I'll adjourn. I'll second that.
All those, all those, appreciate it.